The April 7th City Mountain Council meeting order, if you'll please rise and join me in the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencumbered, indivisible, with other being and justice for all.
If I can have a roll call for attendance, please.
Alderman Grant.
Yes.
Alderman Bone.
Here.
Alderman Tumi. She was. Um, Alderman, Alderman Daw.
He said here, but there's no sound.
Are you muted, bud?
No.
There we go.
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, good, thank you.
Um, Alderman Connor.
Here.
Alderman Pinedo.
Here.
Alderman Ferry.
Here.
Roll call completed.
Thank you. Um, next item is approval of the minutes. I have the minutes from February 18th, March 3rd, and March 17th, council meeting minutes presented. I would entertain a motion for their approval.
So what?
Do I have a second? And I have a second. Are there any amendments or corrections to the minutes as presented? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Grant.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Tumi.
Pass.
Daw.
Pass.
Connor.
Yes.
Pinedo.
Yes.
Ferry.
Pass.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Um, next item on our agenda, is there any presentations or citizen inquiries this evening? Hearing none, move on. Next item is the proclamation. Are we have the folks from WIRC? Great. I will read the proclamation into the record and then present a copy to you both, okay? The month of April is known in the United States as National Child Abuse Prevention Month. To ensure that survivors know that they are not alone, and child abuse includes physical abuse, sexual abuse, emotional abuse, and/or neglect by a parent, caregiver, or someone in a custodial role. And on average, one in seven children experienced some form of abuse in the past year, and on average, one in four girls and one in thirteen boys will experience sexual abuse before the age of eighteen. And ninety-three percent of child sex abuse survivors knew their abuser at the time of the abuse. And forty-seven percent of transgender individuals have experienced some form of sexual violence. And the Victim Services Department at WIRC, Community Action Agency, receives hundreds of crisis hotline calls each year from people who have experienced or witnessed some form of child abuse. And child abuse can be, can have lifelong consequences for the survivor, including impacts to their mental health, physical health, and education. Child abuse is an overwhelming moral, economic, and public health burden, and support and counseling are essential to recover from the trauma of child abuse. And education about the crime of child abuse and the mental and physical impacts on survivors are essential to ending the cycle of abuse and advancing equality, safety, and respect among all individuals. Therefore, I, Rod Davies, Mayor of Monmouth, do hereby proclaim the month of April as Child Abuse Prevention Month, and urge all citizens to stand together against child abuse, to offer support and understandings to survivors, and to participate in awareness activities. Thank you.
Woo!
We have it posted out in City Hall.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Moving on in our agenda, we have one item on the consent agenda, and that is approval of the bills. Sorry, I have a motion and a second. Are there any items to be removed for further discussion or consideration? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Um.
Yes.
Tumi?
Yes.
Daw?
No, no, yes.
My CNI.
We got it.
Daw?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Pinedo?
Yes.
Ferry?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank, thank you. Under committee, the hold. Uh, we have a video gaming vendor request on behalf of County Market. Uh, if you please step to the podium, state your name and your request.
Hello, my name is Colleen Davis, and I'm here representing the Neiman Foods Group. I'm not a public speaker, so I wrote down some comments, I'm just gonna read as I get real nervous, just sorry. Um, thank you for allowing me to address the council. As we continue to navigate the challenges in the retail industry, Neiman Food Group is exploring innovative solutions to safeguard the future of our business while maintaining the quality of service our customers have come to expect. In a rapidly evolving market, we understand the need to think outside the box and embrace creative strategies to stay competitive. To offset the rising operating costs and protect our bottom line, we've made the strategic decision to open gaming parlors within select store locations. This initiative will allow us to generate a new sustainable revenue stream while preserving jobs and preventing potential store closures. Gaming parlors not only offer a new experience for customers, but allow us to better balance financial pressure while continuing to serve our communities. Additionally, we work closely with local municipalities to advocate for the creation of new liquor license categories. This collaboration will open doors to new revenue opportunities, further ensuring our viability and the vi- the viability of our stores in this changing landscape. By embracing these changes, Neiman Foods is committed to maintaining the quality, service, and community ties that have led us to be a trusted name while positioning ourselves to for long-term success. So I'm here today to discuss the potential of obtaining a combination liquor license and gaming license, and welcome any of your questions. And I did bring finders that have pictures of and substantiated information about the ones that we've already done. Um, right now, your Neiman's has seventy, approximately seventy employees, and these are the ones that we've already done. There are four that have, I presented just like this, and they've created a combination liquor license for package. You have to have a liquor pour license according to Illinois Gaming Board, but we really don't have any liquor purchases in our gaming parlors that have already been created. And then, uh, just for your information, there were two stores that are closing in the Neiman group. Not you guys, and you're not on the market for it, but I just thought I'd tell you that we're, we're facing some tough times, so this is an idea that they've come up with. And if anybody'd like to browse through these, I'd be happy to bring them up to you guys to look through.
Okay, I think there's been a request two times previously for a pour license and gaming machines, and, um, I guess, um, I don't know if council's changed or, or not, I guess I'll open it to council for questions or comments or anything that, that you have to say.
So you want a pour license, but you don't actually intend to serve drinks?
They are required to, if someone would like to purchase a drink, they have to go to the customer service, purchase the drink, and the drink would be brought to them in the gaming facilities, but we really don't have anybody that actually does it. It's kind of a quick, I'm in the store, I think I'll go and drop twenty dollars. They're, they're not the same category as like parlors where people stay for hours. It's kind of like a quick little in and out. Not to say that they can't, but we really haven't had any concern with purchases of alcohol at any of our other facilities.
And you say you have done this at other county markets?
I might approach, but you guys, plans, we have on the cover of this one, there's county markets, they have a lot of harvest markets, they're all within, and then I tried to break these down by category, and then I put pictures of it. And we, uh, we work with a architect firm, and they go in and create the rooms. They're, all of them are completely different than one another because they work with the existing store setup and the gaming board rules, where the door has to be in line of sight of someone over twenty-one at all times.
Where do they claim on foot?
I am not a hundred percent positive. In some locations, they've taken out one of the non-used checkout counters and built some rooms. Others had rooms kind of, there's ones with cafes already built in them, so it just depends, and they bring in the architects, so that's above my pay grade.
What's the anticipated revenue?
It depends on, on the backside of each one of those pictures is the municipality report, and it shows that the five percent that comes based on the store. So it would, I really couldn't, couldn't guess. It, it varies from store to store based on how successful it is in each municipality.
What is the percentage that the gaming board gets of those funds?
What's the percentage of the, that the gaming board gets of the funds?
The gaming board takes thirty-five percent, uh, from the top. The operator who provides the machines and the service and all of the equipment gets thirty-two percent, and then the store gets thirty-two percent. But of the IGB state share, the municipalities get five percent. So you get five percent back to you guys for every, uh, that's.
That's uniform amongst all of us.
Oh, yeah.
And all you guys are really doing is approving their ability to get the pour license. Then they have to go to the gaming board and get their own machines.
This is a two-year process.
Yeah.
We've been working on it since, well, some of those are older. They started in Quincy, where we're headquartered, and then Florida had just signed on after now. And I told them that it's, first, the local liquor license is changed, and then they go to the state and change that to a combination license, and then they have to do all of the paperwork for the gaming board, and once that's submitted, it's not even reviewed for about nine months or approved, and that's just based on the gaming board's, uh, schedule. They only have eight meetings per year, so there are several months that they don't even meet. And then once that's approved, that's when we go in as the architects and create it. So it, it would be about two years before this would occur. This is just our slow process of trying to keep stores open, keep people employed, not have to close any. And as you can see, some of those are different categories. There's county markets, there's price cutters, um, they're high-end Neiman stores and harvest markets.
Have you received any feedback from other places where you have, like in Quincy, or I saw like Beardstown was, or Atlanta, or have you heard feedback from other communities as far as what they feel about having gaming machines inside their grocery store?
From other, from the communities that have.
From the communities themselves, from the people.
We, we have really only received positive feedback, honestly. Um, if they had any complaints, they're not, it's not made its way to us.
And who is us? You, you said you're representing Neiman, is that who you work for?
No, I work for a gaming company that has partnered, but I'm the P account representative, so that's the only job I have is to work, to kind of build the two between so that they stay within the lines of what the gaming boards must, all the requirements of that, and then, so we're, we're partnered.
So, can you go to the store or not?
Yeah. I feel differently about this than the other that we have, because this is an already existing business that I don't think it's going to affect much of what everybody else does. I don't think this is going to affect our, if people aren't going to County Market to go gaming, they're gonna go somewhere else to do it. So I'm a little more lenient on this than I would be something else.
Whatever happened to the one person applying for the license, uh, the one who went by shop fully, did he never show it up? Did he ever come back for it?
Uh, council declined to give them a pour license and do the machines.
I just would prefer to, if, if I have to go to the store with my grandsons, you know, I mean, you can't hardly go to a family restaurant without seeing a gaming machine, and so I'm, I'm not inclined to support it.
It just seems out of place to me to put gaming machines in a grocery store. It just doesn't seem, seem strange to me.
Yeah, at this point, I guess you guys probably, somebody needs to make a motion to approve it in a second. You guys can have discussion and vote it up or down, or it can die from lack of any motion or second thereof. I, I.
I can die as far as I'm concerned.
I'd say that some others have done it, and if they're successful with it, and nobody can blame, but I would say like, if they go down, I make the motion.
I'll second that.
What are you making the motion for?
To give them a pour license.
And there was a second.
There was a second.
Me.
So you'd be directing me to draft an ordinance that would grant them, I, I, we have, well, actually, we already have one on the books, right? We have an extra license.
I just think we had a pour license.
In class one?
I'm class one. I believe we had one in class one.
Okay. So, there, there's one available, so basically you're approving them to get, go from class, what, two to one?
One, yeah.
County Market currently is a class two, correct?
No.
Off, off safe.
County Market currently is a packaged liquor store, class four.
Oh, four, okay, so.
So they would have to go to a class one.
If they're going, were they just going to do beer and wine, or are they going, okay, then that's a class three?
It's not even typically wine, it's a case of beer that's kept in a mini cooler behind the.
We don't have.
Yeah, we don't have just beer, so it's a, it'd be from a class four to a class three.
And we don't have a class three.
So, yeah, okay, so we basically motioned for me to create an ordinance allowing for one additional class three license, is what your motion is, and then the second, so that would be awarded to County Market, assuming you voted.
And then it would come back for council's consideration at the next meeting?
Right, that's correct.
Okay. So we have a motion in a second to create a class three liquor license for County Market. Any other discussion?
Can we get your vote on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Hearing no other discussion, a roll call, please.
Alderman Tumi?
No.
Alderman Daw?
No.
Alderman Connor?
Yes.
Alderman Pinedo?
Yes.
Alderman Ferry?
Yes.
Alderman Grant?
No.
Alderman Bone?
No.
Okay, well, that's a tie.
No, it's quarter three.
Quarter three.
Oh, sorry, yes. I'm looking the wrong phone. I apologize. Yep.
So the request is denied?
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, mine. I appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. I'm here.
I need to look at my.
Next item on our agenda, agenda is approval of the generator bid for the West Harlem Water Treatment Plant. Uh, these funds are provided by the RERID grant, uh, Brayden?
Uh, good evening. So, uh, this is the generator for our new water treatment plant on West Harlem. This will be the backup generator. Uh, again, this was through grant funding, so it's at no cost to the city. Um, we only got one bid for this. It came in at two-hundred-and-forty-five thousand, two-hundred dollars, and that was from Quick Electric Contractors. They will be providing a, if we do accept this, a cat generator that runs off natural gas and produces approximately four-hundred kilowatts. So if we lose power at the plant, uh, we can maintain running at least for a time, so. I'd be seeking approval for that. I can answer any questions.
Any questions for Brayden? Yeah, this grant was for acquisition of equipment for the water treatment plant. This is one of the last pieces of, of that. Uh, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the low bid from Quick Electric for two-hundred-and-forty-five-thousand, two-hundred dollars.
I'll move it.
And do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any discussion, questions? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Daw?
Yes.
Connor?
Yes.
Pinedo?
Yes.
Ferry?
Yep.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yep.
Tumi?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, next we have the TIF commercial rehab application for 104 East First Avenue, Lou.
Thank you. Um, so you have received the application from Maple City Warehouse under our, uh, commercial building rehabilitation program for the downtown TIF district. Um, the applicant has four-five-thousand-eight-hundred-seventy-five dollars worth of TIF eligible expenses, which includes installation of, um, upgraded electrical service panel box, a furnace and air, uh, conditioner unit installed, uh, new roof, uh, comprised of materials zoning and tuck pointing of the, uh, of the brick, um, exterior of the building. As I mentioned, uh, it's just over four-five thousand. It does qualify under this program for a, uh, TIF reimbursement in the amount of ten-thousand, eight-hundred-seven dollars and fifty cents, and I would recommend council approval.
Council, have any questions? Um, I'd entertain a motion for approval of the TIF commercial rehab application for 104 East First. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Connor?
Yes.
Pinedo?
Yes.
Ferry?
Yep.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Tumi?
Yes.
Daw?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have our building and zoning march report, Director Clark.
Mayor and council, good evening. The zoning permit continues, new permits, junking degrees, no inspections, and follows up on all open projects. We're a little lax, uh, this month as far as, uh, junk and degrees. I've been on leave, uh, for some time. I have worked remotely, uh, off-site as well as the administrative assistant to the city administrator and his executive administrative assistant have helped handle a lot of the incoming calls, and then have sent to me those that I needed to handle while I was away. Uh, open projects, Beck Oil Company is continuing with the parking lot, and should have that finished up, I think, by the end of this week, and, uh, that's been going along good. Other than that, any questions? Hearing none, thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have the Woodard and Curran February report, Director Blake.
Uh, not a whole lot of big events to report on this time. Um, the one exciting project coming up is on April 25th, we should be getting bid results from the state letting for, uh, West Harlem Roadway Phase One. Uh, we're hoping with that process, depending on how paperwork works out, uh, we should know who our contractor is in early May, and then the hope is for prompt construction after that. Uh, other than that, I just had a few staff anniversaries I wanted to talk about here because I got the notification on my email, and I thought they were pretty impressive. So Peggy Ballard, who works here at City Hall with me, um, she has twelve years with Woodard Curran as of May 1st, but actually has twenty-seven years with the city and/or the contractors who have, uh, ran public works during that time. Uh, Joe McVay, who's our street superintendent, he has, again, twelve years of Woodard Curran, but he has seventeen with the city and/or the contractors. Um, and the final one, Bill Hart, who's our wa- our wastewater superintendent, he actually has thirty-five years with the city, so he has a lot of experience, and we're very lucky to have him. So I just wanted to shout those three out while I had the opportunity. Uh, but I can answer any other related questions if you guys have any.
Any questions for Brayden?
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I appreciate their years of service. I know they, there's a lot of institutional knowledge in that group, and we appreciate their, their service. Next item on our agenda, uh, were you gonna stand up there?
Uh, yeah, I can, I didn't know if you wanted to.
Lou's gonna handle it.
Okay.
We have engineering services agreement for the USDA grant application for the downtown, uh, sewer relocation project.
Thank you. And Brayden's available for any supplemental comments. But, uh, a- as you know, the, um, we have talked about the downtown sewer, which runs basically from the Strom Center, uh, under a couple of buildings, uh, under, uh, South Main Street, and then runs under the, uh, Rivoli Theater, and heads over towards the, the Arboretum. That, that sewer has, has been there for, for many years, well over a hundred years. And in fact, buildings were built on top of it, that's how, how it has been. Uh, we have been trying to, uh, address this issue for, uh, some time, and we have applied for various grants unsuccessfully, but, uh, this, uh, action before you tonight is a, um, scope of services and a fee for services proposal from Woodard and Curran, uh, in the amount of four-five thousand that will enable us to, um, examine the, um, uh, the pipe itself through tele- by televising the interior and, uh, coming up with, um, preliminary designs on how to address it. In many cases, uh, it will be, uh, have to be replaced because of the condition. We know that, we know that there are bricks falling down. Uh, these are old brick, um, sewers, very large diameter, and they are clearly losing their, their integrity. Uh, we are obviously concerned, and they have had for a number of years of potential collapse, particularly those sections of the pipe that are underneath, uh, some of the buildings. So there will have to be some replacement of the sewer line, uh, or relocating the sewer line, and then perhaps lining the sewer line if it's in good enough, uh, strong condition, particularly those sections that are under, underneath, uh, buildings like, like the Rivoli. So our, uh, uh, ask of the council tonight is to engage, uh, Woodard and Curran to perform these services, and also apply on the city's behalf for USDA loan slash grant combination. These, uh, these funds would be available to, uh, help, or they would pay for the cost of the, uh, replacing or lining the sewer, and it would be, uh, divided, uh, in an amount to be determined by the, uh, the Department of Agriculture as far as how much of it is grant and how much of it is a loan. The loan portion has very low interest rates, so this is a very favorable, uh, financial arrangements should we be successful. So would ask for council's approval of this proposal so that we can proceed with trying to secure funding for this, uh, major project, uh, of the sewer underneath downtown.
Yeah, it's gonna be a reroute around an apartment building, around the armory, and , uh, around several other, uh, parts, and then line that that's under buildings that can't be rerouted, so. Um, I would entertain a motion for approval of, uh, disagreement with, uh, Woodard and Curran to apply for that.
No.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Yeah.
And I have a second. Is there any discussion or questions?
Just to clarify, we don't have the grant yet.
No.
No, this is to apply for, but we will need some preliminary engineering information to convey to, uh, the US Department of Ag as part of the application process.
It's a very rigorous application, and it takes some time through their approval process, and, uh, it, uh, yeah, some portion of it will be forgiven, we believe.
Yeah, so the hope is that this four-five thousand dollars for an assessment or whatever will help improve our chances of getting the grant.
This is necessary to apply.
It's not always necessary. They will, they will actually prepare the, the application and submit it on the city's behalf.
Any other questions? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Pinedo?
Yes.
Ferry?
Yes.
Grant?
Yes.
Bone?
Yes.
Tumi?
Yes.
Don.
Yeah.
Connor.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have a TIF redevelopment agreement with Mark Crane at Puffus Bar. Lou?
Yes, we've received an application for the traditional TIF under our TIF District Number Three, Main Street TIF. The developer intends to undertake a number of improvements at the Puffus Restaurant and roughly an amount of $24,000. It includes replacing the concrete parking lot that is currently there on the north side of the building. It also includes making repair to the exterior, west and north sides of the building, which includes metal fascia and gutters, and finishing door closures, and a repair finished from the ground up for 24 inches from the site for the siding itself. There's also some interior work that needs to be done, including partially removing floor, cutting out a floor and removing, and replacing some sewer piping, and then, of course, carpentry work to cover that work back up. It does, all of those are TIF eligible costs, and in front of you, you have the redevelopment agreement that we, this is the agreement that we've used with numerous other businesses under the TIF program. It is a performance base, so there won't be any public funds actually used. It will be TIF funds that are generated from this property as a result of this project. So I would ask for council's approval.
Council, any questions? Discussion. Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Kevin moved.
Kevin moved.
Okay.
Or make a second.
And Jay second. Okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Barry.
Yes.
Grant.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Toomey.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Panero.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. I thank you for applying. Under resolutions, we have the release of executive session minutes. We have no minutes to release, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so hearing none, having none, we'll move on to ordinances. We have a first reading for the reallocating of our home rule volume cap to the Western Illinois Economic Development Authority. This is something we do every year, home rule communities do. We give our bonding capacity back to the Western Illinois Economic Development Authority, which is part of the Illinois Finance Authority that issues double tax exempt bonds. We have no plans for this, and so this will allow our bonding capacity to go back to the regional economic development so that they can do other projects in the region. If we need it, we can go back to them, but we have no plans to use that. It's something we do annually, and it helps the region. I would entertain a motion, or first of all, is there any questions about that? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of reallocating our volume borrowing cap back to the Economic Development Authority.
So moved.
Second. And I have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Grant.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Toomey.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Panero.
Yes.
Barry.
Yep.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Next, we have an ordinance amending our 24-25 budget. Lou?
Yes, thank you. It basically just tries to reflect the actual revenues and expenses that we've incurred that are slightly different than what the budget had originally adopted back in April of last year. There's really only three sections that are affected. The first one is that we've had a number of increases in revenues over what we had estimated last year, including a number of grant funds that have come in, and then, of course, we've expended the vast majority of those grant funds on capital improvements, and that's what you see there under general fund revenues, predominantly the grant funds, state federal grant funds being received and spent on capital projects. In the local motor fuel tax fund revenues, we needed to decrease the amount of money that was being transferred into the fund balance so that we could increase expenditures on engineering fees. These were the fees that were incurred to make sure that we were able to go out to bid and construct the West Harlem Roadway. That includes both Phases One and Phases Two. There was a number of complications incurred that were thrown at us through the Illinois Department of Transportation regarding the location of right-of-way lines, which increased our cost. We also had increases in actual local fuel tax revenues in the amount of $67,000. So again, just an adjustment to reflect the work that needed to be done so that we can go to bid on the West Harlem Road project this year. And then finally, we transferred some funds from TIF District Three, which is the Main Street TIF, into TIF Number One, which is the Downtown TIF, and this was necessary to provide local matching funds for the Public Square Street State project that is currently underway. So those three amendments or adjustments to the budget will put the budget in balance and comply with some of the depositing standards where we're on with it.
I think we did increase our TIF revenues in that TIF as well.
Yeah, there were actually, TIF Number Three, the Main Street TIF, is actually doing very well for us, which allowed us to transfer some of those funds to help with the Public Square Street State projects.
Council, have any questions? Lou on the budget amendments? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for approval of the amendment of the 24-25 budget. So moved.
Sorry.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Grant.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Toomey.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Panero.
Yes.
Barry.
Yep.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And now we have the adoption of the 25-26 fiscal year budget, I think that's been presented to council a couple of times. We had our public hearing, it's been on display and available for inspection. Lou?
No, I really have nothing to add, but if you have any questions or comments, certainly try to respond to you.
Hearing none, I would entertain a motion for its approval. So Lou?
So Lou's second. Bone.
So I have a motion. Motion.
Sorry. Panero.
Yes.
Okay. Bone.
Yes.
Toomey.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Panero.
Yes.
Barry.
Yep.
Grant.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. For Illinois statute, we need to go into executive session with possible action involved concerning collective bargaining and possible purchase of real estate. I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And a second. Any discussion? Hearing none or roll call, please.
Toomey.
Sorry, sorry. Yes.
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 Don.
Yes.
Connor.
Yes.
Panero.
Yes.
Barry.
Yep.
Grant.
Yes.
Bone.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Bone?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. We will.[1085.82]